Public schools is to provide all students with relevant, challenging educational experiences to prepare them to be engaged, responsible citizens and members of the global committee, community, sorry. Now, we're going to have a hearing of visitors. Anybody? Hearing none. We'll go on to the reading and the approval of our records. We have the August 4th meeting, which was the joint meeting between the Abington School Building Committee, School Committee, and the Board of Selectment.
Now, these are drafted by...
Teresa...
Mary Mahoney.
Oh, sorry. Mary Mahoney made the initial... I'm sorry. This is the joint meeting.
Yep. So, if people have had a chance to take a look at them, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of August 4th, 2014 as presented or amended.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Just talk about the...
Yeah.
So, just a moment ago, you were handed another copy of the June 17th minutes. The only change was a typo. Appreciate that Paul found a typo on page two. The word charter needed to be changed, so we just made that one correction with what was handed to you a moment ago from what you had previously.
So, we'd be looking for a motion, if everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes of June 17th, make a motion to approve those minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the MASSE, MASSS Annual Joint Conference, which will be held this November. I think we have that in our packet. And Kathy and Peter?
Currently Kathy and I are already signed up because we save money on pre-registration. However, anybody else that would like to attend would love to have company.
We did find last year that there were a lot of different workshops all at the same time. So, if there were more people that wanted to attend, we could separate and gather more information.
At a subsequent meeting to this, I will bring to the committee the delegate assembly positions and what they'll be asking the delegate from Abington to vote on at that meeting. That's in the meetings to come.
And if people wanted to go to a portion versus the whole three days, that's an option too?
Yes.
Is this a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Yes. We've been going back and forth. Wednesday through Saturday.
Yeah.
Saturday's pretty quiet, though.
They have made some changes to Saturday.
What does it cost for that?
I want to say it's around $190 per person.
Oh, okay.
Approximately. So, if anybody else decided they wanted to attend, they could let you know, Teresa?
Yes, I can register them, yes.
Okay.
And get a purchase order, et cetera.
Do we have to take a vote on that to approve anybody else going?
No, I don't think so.
The only thing we will be worried about is that the school committee has the delegate assembly.
Yeah.
Okay, so we good on that? So, next, we have the report of the subcommittees. This would be an update from our School Committee Policy Subcommittee, which is Kathy Bailey and Paul Hagerty, looking for an update from this committee.
Paul and I have met. Are you trying to, I believe, my call?
Yes.
And what we are doing is we've both taken a look at the Governance and Operations Section of Policy Panel for numerous schools. They are available online at MASSE. Paul put together some information from that, and we're taking it section by section. Currently, we've already reviewed goals and evaluations, already responsibilities, and the better part of meeting's responsibilities. What we have reviewed has been sent to council, reviewed, and we'll be looking at that our next meeting, which is scheduled for September 3rd at 3:30. Once we have everything put together and approved, and we've taken a look at it, and we'll be bringing it to the full committee for quote, Paul, Matt, and me.
Just to that point, you know, when we do bring it to you, there's a lot here. It's 44 sections. It's about 30-some pages long. But if you were to go out to the MASSE, because what we try to do is just model it after. I mean, we didn't create this. We're just using what other areas, other towns are using through the MASSE. So, we're just trying to fine-tune it to what we need as a district. And then, you know, between Kathy and I, we're just trying to put the best product forward based on what the MASSE has and also what other towns are using. But just to give you a heads up, there is a lot to this. There's 44 different sections, different policies broken up into six sections. So, we just ask you for your time and patience when we do get it through, to go through it. There is a lot there.
Can I just comment? And I appreciate the amount of time and thought put into this, for what you're going to be seeing, because it really provides a nice direction on policies. So, appreciate the work. Thank you for the help.
And we are anticipating the September, October meeting, probably?
We're hoping we'll have part of it ready for the next meeting. The whole document won't be ready, but it might be better if it was reviewed in sections because there is so much to it. So, I think this part that's already been reviewed by council, and Paul and I, and Peter will be taking a look at it at our next meeting. And hopefully, that section that's already been reviewed by council, we would have ready for you for the next meeting.
Okay, so there's no motion needed on that, just an update.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have the report of the Superintendent of Schools, Peter Schaefer.
So, I have a number of appointments to announce to you. Before I do that, an appointment that we have already made is for our Director of Technology, Richard Bicowski. I want to give you a little bit of his background, introduce him to you, and Rich has agreed to come and introduce himself to you tonight, and then spend a moment talking about our new and improved website. When Rich talks about the website, I want to be very clear that Rich gets the credit along with a host of other people for the work that they did on this website, and I get the blame. Already, and I appreciate it, Paul was able to find a couple of things on it that we've changed in the last 24 to 48 hours to help improve this because we realized what an important communication tool it is in this day and this age. And so, again, Rich gets the credit for that, along with some other people that have worked on it, and I get the blame. So, Rich, we're lucky to have found Rich. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree in computer science and his Bachelor of Arts degree in geography from UNH. He was previously working in the Weymouth Public Schools. He comes to us with great experience in schools. He was the Coordinator of Technology and Infrastructure in Weymouth and a technology support specialist, so he understands technology not only at that infrastructure level, but also at the classroom level in terms of helping people with their needs in classrooms. I'm trying to see if you're willing to come to the podium and say hello.
Thank you, Peter, and thanks to the committee for a few minutes of your time to show off the website. I'm sure you've all looked at it at this point, but I'll go over some of the details, I guess. As someone who is new to the district, when I was doing some research on Abington, I was looking at the old website, so this is a vast improvement from that. So, I'm excited to be a part of that unveiling and continuing to make it better. I think the biggest thing that's an improvement with this one and the last one is just ease of use, being able to find information. Just simply clicking up here on Central Office, if I have my mouse here, let's see. If I can click up on Central Office, I can find Peter's name, which before took, I think, two or three clicks. So, just that right there is a major improvement over what we had before. So, if we go back to the homepage, some of the finer things to point out...
Is that why I'm getting more phone calls?
Probably, yes. One of the biggest things you'll notice on the page, and these buttons over here carry pretty much through the entire website, these four items we picked are really important items for folks who would be trying to go to the website and find information. You know, the calendar, having worked in schools and dealt with websites before, parents are always calling about the calendar, always trying to find out, is this day off? When does school start? When is school over? So, that's obviously an important thing to have front and center. We've got the school committee information, food service and staff directories. If they want to find out what's for lunch this week, it's right there. If they want to find out how to get in touch with their child's teacher, it's right there in front of them. So, those travel, as I said, as we go through the site, and we'll see that as we go. Down below that, these popular links have come in really handy for me in the past few days because when staff members go home and they want to get their email, I can say, you can just go to the Abington Public Schools website. The link is right there, so they don't have to remember, I need to go here, I need to do that. It's all right there for them. And then, we've got, and a lot of the look and feel carries through the page, but we've got the latest news and the message from the superintendent here, which we will be keeping up to date as the year goes on. And then, the district page here has the pictures that kind of, they're selections from different schools around the district. As we go further on, you know, each school has pictures relative to that particular school, but the district kind of pulls from different places. So, I had already gone to the central office. We've got these side links, obviously, that stand out, but then across the top, again, keeping things nice and neat and clean, if you need central office information, you just head up here to the central office. You've got the contact information right there. And then, all of the other important district-level information comes right here on the side. There's my section right here, here's the school committee section right there. So, all of this is, it's very easy to get to. I was clicking through this today, even if you need to find information, it is not a lot of clicks to get to where you need to go. And again, continuing across the top, each of the schools has their own section on this menu. The high school side menu is the largest one, I believe. But again, it looks and feels kind of the same as you go from place to place, so I feel like that's important. You know, parents may have kids at different schools. If each school looks different, where am I? Where do I go here? How do I find this? It all looks the same. The links look the same. You've got the contact information for the school right at the top. And then, obviously, you can find other information relative to the school as we go down, the handbooks, other links. Hopefully, no one has to use it, but the bullying link is there. And then, again, the news and the message from the principal. We're hoping the principals keep their message up to date, you know, as the year goes along, and I'll be chasing them a little bit for that, as well as keeping up these latest news items here. So, obviously, the high school has already started keeping these things up here so the kids know where the meetings are for their groups and things like that.
Can I just ask you, on that stuff bullying, would that take you into, if you had to report something?
Yes, if you gloss over right there, it actually gives you the report right there. And the high school has their Twitter link right here, so you can click here, and it's an easy place for the parents to see where they get onto the Twitter feed and follow the high school. And I'll give you, we'll take a look at the Frollo as well. Just to kind of reiterate, again, it looks, it looks very similar. You go from site to site, from school to school, things look the same. We've got the same information. It's easy to get anywhere that you need to go. Continuing across the top, we've got the community link, and the information about connections between the district and the Abington community as a whole. Obviously, the School Building Committee link, which is near and dear to all of our hearts. And then, you know, additional, the building use forms, and then additional links to other parts around town. So, another place just to go, obviously, and to kind of show, you know, the schools are tied in with the town. It's not just the schools on an island. We're all in this together. And then, the Students and Family section of the site kind of is a place where families can go to try and get information that would be relative directly to them. Again, we've got the calendar front and center. A lot of this, these documents and forms, this is a good spot where it includes a lot of different things that you can go to one place and get forms for a multitude of different parts of the school district, whether it's the athletics, whether you want to find the handbooks. It's all kind of in one place here. So, you can find most of these things from the particular school sites, but if you head here, it's kind of all one-stop shopping for you in this location.
Can I ask, is this technology we use in here newer than what we were using previously?
Yes. The old website was hosted here in Abington with a software called .net nuke. This is actually hosted by a company outside of here, so it's easier for them to keep up. You know, they're a website company, so they handle multitudes of websites. So, they're hosting it. It's their responsibility to keep it up. They keep their servers updated and keep all of that stuff backed up and all of that. So, it's actually easier on my end to maintain it. I don't have to worry about making sure the server's running all the time.
However, one of the things that's different here in Abington than some of the other districts is other districts have someone whose, their specific role is the webmaster, or they outsource the maintenance. And we do that in-house in Abington to try to save money.
So, just ask you, just on the, as far as the technology, so when we look at this now, because when you see a form, whether it's here or you go to central office or the home, that form that you're clicking on is going to be the same throughout the entire...
Yes, that is a point of focus for us, to make sure that when we're uploading things, it's all just going to one spot. So, if you're in central office and you're finding this form, it's the same as if you're here and you're finding it.
Well, then, how data works.
Correct.
It pulls from the same, and that's a huge...
Yeah, no, because that's what I've found with this, which is great. Where previously, you could have multiple forms, but it seems like this one, you've got, you know, you go to this one spot, you find that form. You go here, it's the same form. You go here, it's the same form, and it's like, all right, this is great.
However, we did have one issue that was resolved, where the lunch menus were the current lunch menus for what students were receiving this week in school. But when you got, when you accessed the page one way, it showed April at the top, and in another page, when you accessed it, it didn't show April at the top. And the menus were all the right menus, but that was very misleading. It looked as if we had the April menu published for August and September.
Depending how you, we found that there were actually two food service sites somehow. It was the ones, they were two separate pages.
But that's been resolved.
Yeah, so there's only one now.
Yeah, exactly.
Took care of that. And so, again, just to kind of follow up what's on this page, we've got the documents, we've got the transportation information here, so this is in a spot for families in particular to get a lot of the information that they need. You know, that's maybe more on a district level versus on a particular school. And then, the last tab we have is the staff tab. Still need to build this out a little bit, but we've got some staff links and the staff directories. We're also building out the staff webpages. We've been asking the staff members if they have webpages to let us know, and we can post them up here. And so, I think that's a quick rundown of the website. Excited about it. I'm happy. The old one, like I said, wasn't that great, so this is much better, and it's nicer to be in charge of something that's a little cleaner and easier to maintain.
Can you also just show them how to live, like, to get email...
Oh, sure, yeah. It's over here. It's kind of buried over here. The Constant Contact mailing list is right here. The resolution on the screen's a little tough, so it kind of bounces off to the side, but you can go on here, and this is where you would put in your email address, and then you can subscribe to various email alerts for the school district. So, that's where you would head to take care of that.
Can I ask a question? You said that it was up to each principal to make their updates. So, if, say, Matt McCurtin at Woodsdale wants to make a change, is he funneling that through you, or...
Yeah, we've been working out that process, and the way the process will work is if there's updates for a particular school, the principal will approve those schools. So, a lot of the updates will come from the principals, but at the high school in particular, there's a lot of different clubs and things like that. So, if they want to make an update, they actually have a form to fill out, and then they can supply the content to the principal to look over, and then the principal approves the request. It comes to me, and then I take care of making sure it gets up there.
Yeah. Just wanted to thank you for putting this together, and it's very professional-looking. It's very impressive, and it's coming at a good time where hopefully, we can have a new school building go up right along with it. That would be great. Thank you.
I just want to say, as a parent, I was on this tape yesterday, and I thought it was very easy. It was updated, very current, and I liked it.
Perfect, thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
Great.
Can I just propose that, I know we've got enough subcommittees already, but I volunteer for this one, just as far as the school committee section, what we want out there? Because there's only a couple of things there, and it's like, you know, should we be driving the bus behind that, what we actually want out there? So, if we were going to set up a subcommittee, I'd welcome that, to be able, and we would just feed the stuff, what would come to, back to the school committee, but...
You have a point.
Because, you know, you'll get on to what other towns are doing, and it's really, this really is nice. This is slick. And to Jonathan's point, you know, it will match the new school that we have.
Sometimes, when I go to other school websites, and I meet them all the time because I'm comparing information, and I look at some of the wealthier communities, and they've got, you know, when it's snowing out, they've got snowflakes that fall over the screen, you know, or rain, or things like that, and bells and whistles like that. And it's just, we have found a way in-house to do this. It's not that we wouldn't want to have those bells and whistles, but we're really, you know, focused on those things are most important because it's such a critical communication tool. So, I just, I just feel the need to say that.
I think it's better to be clean and easy to access than have any, to see no pictures on it.
People want to see pictures of their kids.
Pictures of kids.
And so, that's up there.
Pictures of...
Yeah, pictures of, pictures of their kids in school, in activities, is important to us. That's what people want to see. That's what's up there. No pictures of me.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Nice meeting everybody, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
So, as to Paul's...
Good point. Could you say yes to that?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, well, I'd volunteer for it. We'd come back the next meeting.
I'd volunteer for that.
Okay. Yeah, we'll come back with some ideas for the next one.
Okay. So, you'll...
Yeah, so Jonathan and I will...
Okay.
Teresa, did you get that?
Should, are we doing this in a motion or just, you just volunteer?
We haven't voted for some committees before.
We haven't really...
The chair has appointed subcommittee members.
Did we think we'd go back to September?
Yeah, no problem. Definitely.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be good.
So, this will be our school committee...
Website subcommittee.
Website subcommittee?
You can call us the webmasters.
The webmasters.
That's another unpaid school committee position.
Yes. Exciting. So, we're going to continue on.
So, under the report of the superintendent of schools, I've accepted the resignation of Marilyn Busara as a cafeteria worker. I've accepted the resignation of Maureen Cronin as a special needs teacher. I've accepted the resignation of Donna Hayden as a tutor. I've accepted the resignation of Kate McCully as a mathematics teacher. I've approved the appointment of the following people, Jeffrey Boudreau as a full-time temporary one-year substitute elementary teacher, Janet Karen as a special education teacher, Samantha Maffeo as an elementary teacher, Vida Jaugra as a speech and language pathologist. Approved the appointment of Patricia Nakata as an elementary teacher, Timothy Pease as a full-time temporary one-year substitute elementary teacher. I have approved the appointment of Amanda Ferreira as a two-fifths foreign language teacher, Paul Bucheri as an 18-hour-a-week library tutor. Approved the appointment of Zachary English as a full-time temporary one-year substitute foreign language teacher, Kristen Gerhart as a math teacher, Eric Lee as a substitute science teacher, Paula Magnasco as a school nurse, Lauren Patrasik as a math teacher, Christina Sweeney as a guidance counselor, Megan Tomlin as a tutor. Approved the appointment of the following cafeteria workers, Mary Ann Sullivan, Mary...
Wachowski.
Wachowski. Barbara Young. Approved the appointment of Robert Pertle as a 25-hour-a-week utility person. Approved the appointment of the advisors and updated, because it was not labeled in your packet, is, this is the exact same information with the addition, did we add a name to it? With the addition of Lauren Patrasik as a soccer coach.
She already made the other list. Two different ones.
And those are the advisors.
So, one is for the advisors, and one is for the coaches. This would be an opportunity for me to point out that one of the people who did not, well, I should point out two things. The first thing I want to make sure that I point out to you is, for, which I think you know, but I should say this for the benefit of the community, I just rattled off a list of new employees in the Abington Public Schools. You'll hear later about how busy we were this summer. This is one of the reasons. There's a rigorous vetting process that all of these people went through. But please know that we didn't add 25 teachers to the Abington Public School faculty and staff list this summer. These are people who are replacing people that have left us. These are people that are in long-term subs, for people that are out for leaves. We did need to add, and we talked about this, a kindergarten teacher at the end of last year because we anticipated numbers in kindergarten that we were going to breach 25 in a room, and 25 five- and six-year-olds in the same room together would not be, if we could find a way to avoid that, what we needed to do. So, the second thing that I wanted to mention on this list is one of the people who isn't returning, he met with me, he was replaced on this list, is Chris Beatrice. He was our basketball coach for 10 years. I know Chris pretty well. He was, he just did a great job with our kids and appreciate that he was our basketball coach. I know him also through youth basketball. Coaches, not only coached high school, he coached for his town. So, he's, appreciate his service. In the last bit of announcements I have under this section is approve the following recommendations from principals for professional teacher status, Matthew Campbell, Diana Flaherty, Matthew Holtzman, Catherine Spaziani, and Taryn Whitman. So, if you have any questions or anything to note.
Can I just add, the professional teacher status, what is that?
After you've completed three years in Massachusetts as a teacher, three full years, the first day of your fourth year, you are granted professional teacher status. So, each of these people was evaluated multiple times through the year. That does not mean that once you get professional teacher status, you're not evaluated, you just move to a different cycle. They had mentors during this time period. Nationally in education, we lose about 50% of the people who try to become teachers in their first three years, and so, supporting them in these first three years is important. And in Massachusetts, by statute, once you've completed those three years, that process, that evaluation process, you've had a mentor, then you're given what is called professional teacher status. So, what changes is your evaluation cycle.
Is that a full into tenure, or...
They're similar.
Okay. How many do we have in the district that are in that status, professional teacher status, with and without?
Without having the spreadsheet in front of me, I'd be, I'd be venturing a g... who try to become teachers in their first three years. And so, supporting them in these first three years is important. And in Massachusetts, by statute, once you've completed those three years, that process, that evaluation process, you've had a mentor, then you're given what is called professional teacher status. So, what changes is your evaluation cycle.
Is that a full into tenure, or?
They're similar.
Okay. How many do we have in the district that are in that status, professional teacher status, with and without?
Without having the spreadsheet in front of me, I'd be, I'd be venturing a guess at maybe twenty or thirty percent without status?
Any teacher that's been hired in the last three years?
Yeah.
Do not have professional teacher status, so.
I mean, I wanna look it up to give you an absolute answer, but I don't have that in front of me. That's from looking at our budget spreadsheets from last year. Trying to go from that memory.
In that three years where basically they get weed, yeah, without, I'm just gonna be kinda crass here, as my mother-in-law likes to say about me, is, that's where you weed, weed people out, right?
Correct.
At the third.
That's what happens, yeah.
Okay.
Or you support them so that they might do the job correctly.
True, right, right.
Any other questions?
I just had a question. So, if we have an open spot on some of these appointments?
Yes. If we have an open spot, it's still, it's still vacant. This is sort of an ongoing process.
Right. We have posted them all, and people have applied. We only appointed the fall coaches, but the advisors, we still have openings. People haven't applied yet.
And then, as those are appointed, you'll give us the status?
I bring them to you.
Yep.
Just on the, on the advisors, the, I actually would ask this before, like, the stars and the ones, and do those, what do those mean?
What that means is, the way it's posted, I did cut off the bottom, is sometimes they're, like, next to senior class, they could have another advisor, and it could be paid, they could have two advisors and one be paid from the senior class account, from any funds, the senior class. The handbook advisor. So, I can get the copy of the actual posting, 'cause it will say contingent. One is for contingent on funding, and one is funded through another source, through a student account, or.
Some are carried and paid for differently, depending on whether they pay a fee to participate or not.
Oh, okay, alright. Is there any moving, like, a little wedge in down? I think you said it was already there?
Right.
Okay.
I should've left that on there, but I took it off, so.
Or remove the stars.
Okay.
Remove the stars, yeah.
Now, the student account bookkeeper, the one at the high school, one at the middle school, those, those are, is that a, that's a parent taking that position?
No. No, it's usually a secretary. It's a stipended position to manage all the transactions that occur around fees, deposits, account balances.
For student, for student activities.
For student activities.
Okay. So, it's someone that, it's an employee?
Correct.
It's, okay.
And they follow the protocols, the protocol that you're talking about, Felicia, you used to set it up?
They follow, there's policies and protocols that are developed, that have been developed by the state of Massachusetts, and the Department of Revenue, and the Mass School Building, no, Mass Business Managers Association. And we do it, I do a training with the bookkeepers, and it's, they have their books, they're audited internally, they're, they will be audited externally in the coming years. But they, everything comes through my, deposits come through my office. I approve reimbursements back into the student activity account. I think we talked a little bit about it last year. There's a checking account and a savings account, and it's, it's very controlled. And it's, I think it's a pretty good process. And it's, we follow the, like I said, the Masbo guidelines around student activity accounts. The high school student activity account has a lot of money that comes in and out of it throughout the year. So, that's, the bookkeeper for that is a, is a pretty big position, in that they have, you know, all the junior class activities, the senior class activities, any of the clubs that collect money, do car washes, fundraisers, that, all that money goes in through the student activity account, and spent back out through the student activity account.
If I could just say, as far as, 'cause I know we've got all the advisors there, and then the fall sports. But I went to the fall sports parent night, and very well attended. But I gotta give Peter and Kate a lot of credit, for, it was a great night. And the way they handled it, as far as, they had one, some students put a video together, it was really well, like what Green Lake Pride means. And that'd be, sound would be nice if maybe we could get on the website, 'cause it was really well done. And then the fact that they bring in a graduate from Abington High School to talk about what it means to be a graduate, to be a student athlete in Abington. It was really, it was a nice night. So, I wanna give Peter and Kate a lot of credit for that, it was well done.
Thank you. I'll forward that to them. Continuing on?
Yes, I think so. Are we good with?
Under other matters, I have the back-to-school report. In your packet, you have a copy of what was sent to all of the faculty and staff, including the startup activities, our new teacher orientation, and then our opening day for staff, that led up to today's opening. There was a lot of work done over the summer, you know, I just read off the appointments that were made. Along with the summer usual project list of staffing, scheduling, repairing the buildings, have been a lot of work with the Abington School Building Committee. I'm going to be talking about that later in the agenda. I'll highlight this a couple of times. Obviously, you know, as a part of my introduction to the faculty and staff, and to the community, that we have a special town meeting on September twenty-seventh, at ten AM in Abington High School. And we have a special, we have a town ballot election that will take place on October eighteenth. Those are both Saturdays. And again, I'm gonna talk about that a little later in the agenda, but that was certainly a part of the opening. But, in order to open school, any given year, requires building maintenance, bus routes, schedules, the evaluations need to be completed, rosters and assignments, schedules for students and staff, the update of the technology, and the technology infrastructure that you saw a little bit of, but all of the computers in the district imaged and cleaned up, in terms of their internal workings. And then the ordering of materials and supplies, textbooks and things like that. So, I need to thank all of the people that had a hand in that, because when I went around the district today, although, on any given year, you know, my, my phone does ring, and there are problems in the district with people with, with bus stops, or they get their bus tags don't necessarily come on time, because they're late to sign up for the bus, or they're not happy with their classroom placement, those, those, those issues occur. But, for example, this morning, and today, from beginning to end, you know, our high school students drove into the parking lot like they were responsible drivers, and parked and went into the building, and had a good day at the high school. Our Frolio students, as in the Frolio, had a good day at the Frolio. The, I have not had time to get my own back-to-school haircut, but I saw the young men today at the Woodsdale and the Beaver Brook, you know, in the high school with, with their back-to-school haircuts, and, and I saw the new outfits, and, you know, the kids just were excited to be in school. And as they left school, you know, especially at dismissal, as at the Beaver Brook, walking around, talking to parents, asking kids how their day was, they seemed happy. It was a very hot day, tomorrow's gonna be a hotter day. I wish we had air conditioning. As we develop this plan for this new building, in the coming years, we will have a climate-controlled building. And so, the next couple of days are gonna be tough. But, we can't control the temperature of the weather. And so, I need to thank our maintenance, our custodians, our secretaries, our central office staff, our people working on transportation, and food service, and technology people. We had a really, we had a really good opening for our students, and a start to the school year. Also, though, the Abington Police Department was out and about all over Abington, helping us slow the traffic down, because school's back in session. And what happens is commuters fly through certain areas all summer, and then when we open school, they need to learn that they either need to take another route to work, or that they're gonna have to travel more slowly through certain intersections, especially around the Frolio, the high school, the Beaver Brook, that are right on those more mainish thoroughfares. So, you know, you can't fake the excitement that I saw today. It was there, and it was exciting. I believe we had a good opening, so. Answering these questions about that.
I know, we talked about it last year, the crosswalks, and how the police were responsible for placing the barrels. Is that still the?
Correct. There are, I mean, I saw numerous, can't remember what I saw. I drove thirty-nine miles this morning, in and out of neighborhoods and towns, following buses. So, they're there, and there were a number of the signs that have your speed when you're coming down the street, and, and like Peter said, there were, the police were definitely very vigilant around speeding in the school areas this morning, and this afternoon.
And that's at their discretion, where those?
Yeah.
Can I just say one other thing? I, I would like to just make sure that people know that the, the crossing guard for the Abington Public Schools is for the Woodsdale, and it's on one thirty-nine at the end of Chestnut Street. And I just wanna remind people that there is a crossing guard there, that it is safe to have your students walk from those neighborhoods to the Woodsdale School. We've seen definitely a decline over the last few years of the number of students that do walk from, from the other side of, of one thirty-nine. So, there is a crossing guard there, and if your student does wanna, if you feel comfortable with your student walking, they do need to walk up to that intersection of Chestnut and one thirty-nine and cross there. Same thing if they're riding their bikes, and are going across one thirty-nine, and they should be making that cross at Chestnut Street.
You know, and I, I say this, we send messages out all winter, and, you know, I need to ask parents to please be aware of their child's route to school, or to bus stops, for a hundred and eighty days. Because even a cul-de-sac can be, a dean can have a hazardous situation on it, on what people would think is the safest street in Abington, if you don't know the condition. Because with weather changing the way that it does, the town's not able to plow the sidewalks in the middle of winter, I hate to even mention that, because it's August, but, so I just, I'm always worried about that. I need to ask parents to be aware of their child's route to school.
It's two snow references so far tonight. For those keeping track. Sorry.
So, update in the Abington School Building Committee. Again, I wanna say this over and over again, on September twenty-seventh, we have a special town meeting at ten AM at Abington High School. On October eighteenth, it's planned that we'll have a ballot election. In your packets, you've got some information that's been produced. And I just wanna say to people, because we may have people watching on cable, and I hope that we do, this one plan improves the educational environment for all children in Abington K through twelve. Our pre-K through, our pre-K students would be in the new building. K through two, which is three grades, would be at the Beaver Brook Elementary School, which would relieve the overcrowding in that building, which is hard on those kids. The Woodsdale would become a three-four building. The new building would be five through twelve. Five and six would be on one floor. Seven and eight grade, grade students would be on another floor. The high school would be on the other side of the building, so they'd be physically separate. We do not want fifth graders even necessarily with, with their eighth graders during the school day. There's different cafeterias, different gymnasium spaces. The district and the town of Abington would have an auditorium for the first time. And this would also employ the use of the Frolio Middle School, not for extravagant offices, but for the purpose of our maintenance staff, accounts payable, payroll, pupil personal services, the business office, the food service. And also, our students would be able to use the locker areas for, for the use of Memorial Field, the Graham baseball field, and for our softball field. And then, we would take on as many tenants as would be interested in leasing out parts of the building to help offset the cost of using the Frolio. The other school buildings that would not be used, I would be recommending to this committee would be turned back to the town for good purpose, for good municipal use, for sale, for whatever the town chooses to do.
The gym will also be used, which will offset the cost.
The Frolio would be used. So, you've got more facts and figures here in your sheet that describe some of the things I was just talking about. You've also got a sheet that describes the educational benefit of the new school building. And I keep saying to people, that's about technology, that's about technology, that's about technology. We do not have adequate Wi-Fi access, this would provide that. We have students in classrooms that were designed for kids in the day when they used to work in rows, in teacher-directed lessons, they need room to do project-based work with technology-rich materials, and, and we don't have the room for that. Those things would occur in the new building. So, also, in terms of safety and security, with electronic, with electric doors and video cameras, the building would be up to today's standards and twenty-first century learning standards. So, I just wanna put that plug in. We will be going into Boston a couple of times over the next couple of weeks to zero in on the exact numbers for Abington, so that when we go to these meetings with the town, and the town has a decision to make, we can give them the exact numbers, and those numbers won't move. And that's why the, that's why the ranges have been given to people. Now, they've been very narrow ranges, but that's because you wait until they commit to the exact number, and their number doesn't change, before you announce that, that number. So, people have questions about that, or what?
When we get all the technology, all the hardware, the computers, the laptops, desktops, whatever they may be, who makes that decision as to what percentage of what we get?
First laptops versus maybe iPads versus desktops? Do we have a say in what we wanna bring in?
We absolutely have a say. We're already working with the technology consultant with, that works with the architect. We've had a number of meetings with Aaron Hayer, the previous technology director, along with their technology consultant. And we actually have a meeting scheduled next week with Rich and the technology consultant. One of the things that's hard at this point is, we won't occupy the building till the winter of two thousand seventeen. So, anything that is really proposed now, will go through twenty, you know, generations by the time we get there. So, once we get to, they said within about six or eight months of the opening, that's when you actually buy the hardware, the, in-classroom hardware, because you, you do wanna get the, you know, latest and greatest at that point. And so, and, and, again, I'd like to say it'll be a combination of desktops and laptops, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that, at this point, that would be, I think, what we'd recommend. But, three and a half years, three years from now, it may be a different, it may be, you know, one-on-one initiative, because the cost of, of the, the hardware has gone down, that that can be afforded within the project, or it could be, you know, some combination to provide greater access for students.
We know that we wanna go to a one-to-one computer ratio, so that students are able to use handhelds with their daily learning activities. We know we wanna make that recommendation and put that program in place. As this comes online, you need to really spend a year planning for that, with the tools you're gonna use, so that your staff has good professional development in that, before you implement it. You need to start making your software purchases differently, around textbooks and things like that. And so, again, as those initiatives change, we want that proposal to be the latest and the greatest proposal up to the moment. I mean, for example, a lot of schools that went with iPads are learning that, you know, they're, they're a great label, but they aren't quite as effective as, as they thought they would be as iPads as learning tools. So, do you go with tablets, or do you go with iPads? So, that's a discussion that we'll have.
But I think the important part of that is that the infrastructure within the building will support a one-to-one initiative, that, so that if, if and when we get to that point that, you know, twelve hundred people in the building could be on one or multiple devices within the wireless network, and be able to plug into electrical outlets if need be. That, that'll be the infrastructure that'll be in place.
Okay, and the Wi-Fi will be restricted to within the building? Is there any chance of that Wi-Fi possibly extending beyond the building, so that other people could possibly, you know, tie into the network, when we don't want other people tying into the network? And I would assume it's password and firewall protected?
Yeah, yeah, we have, within, currently within each school, there's a public and a private wireless network. So, the, the public network is very restrictive in terms of where you can go within that wireless network. And then there's a private that is more open for staff, and to, to be able to use their wireless devices to get to more websites.
The example is, if you're doing, if you're a teacher, and you're doing a project on a three-toed frog, and, you know, there's, you know, there's, the whole life cycle of a frog includes things that a very restrictive filtering system would not allow you access to something that's entirely appropriate. And so, on the teacher-driven Wi-Fi, there's less, there are less safeguards. But if you're on the more public one, you may be trying to do something like that, and you wouldn't have access to it. We have a system in place by which people can make requests to open web. We have a system in place by which people can make requests to open websites, and then the technology office looks at them and then opens them up.
And the filtering is done with an outside contract, you know, contract, if you will. And it's a, and because those websites are changing all the time around.
It's a very delicate balance.
It's a very delicate balance. And, I mean, for example, this summer, they were doing some changes to the firewall, and all of a sudden, we got a lot of spam email to our email, town email accounts. And so they had to make an adjustment, even though the adjustment that they made, they didn't think that was going to happen, and that's what happened. So they're, the websites that are blocked, if you will, on the, on the public side, are ones that, it's not that we choose to block. They're blocked by, kind of under an educational umbrella.
On the private side, do we allow them to bring your own devices? I mean, if someone had even...
A teacher?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that, are there a lot of cases of that?
Um, I don't, I mean, they have a device in their class, every teacher has a computer in their classroom, but they may have done something on their home, on their own laptop and bring that in, and that's what they're using it within the classroom. Is that what you?
Yeah, yeah. That's got to get senseful.
Other questions?
I just had, just on your memo, it was well done. I just wanted to make one clarifying point on this stuff, is without September 27th and a two-thirds vote, October 18th doesn't happen.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, we need, we need people out there to support this on September 27th to get that two-thirds vote.
Yep. And then we need 50.1% on October 18th.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. And then, the other thing I thought was really key and key, and that I just took from it, because you know, as far as, you know, you look at the pros and cons of the new school, but for me anyways, the old geezer that graduated Mount High School in 1982, is, it's easy to look at the school and say, well, jeez, look at the building, they've got new windows and this and that. But what I took from some of the literature that we brought here, and it really jumped out on me, is much of the way education is delivered is far different than what probably generations were trying to learn. And that's huge, especially for me, when I look at it, say, geez, the way they do math now, and computers and everything like that. And I just hope people consider that, how things have changed, and, you know, it's, Abington High School, structurally, it's there, but it's not enough for our kids now. And we need more. And I hope people go out there and really do think about this, and consider on September 27th to support it, because the kids really do need it. I mean, it's amazing how, what we saw, the resources that kids have in other towns when we did those tours. It's just amazing, and the stuff that kids can do. The kids in Abington are always doing, are already doing fabulous work, and with the teachers and the administrators, and if they can do so much work more with the right equipment and infrastructure. So, I hope people are up there, and that's my suggestion.
No, I think it is important to have that technology infrastructure at the school level, because it's going to be out there in business, it's going to be out there in college, and you have to be prepared for that, so.
Thank you.
So...
Any other questions or? So, what I have for you also are three policies. Now, I'm not going to ask the committee if they would consider them tonight, but I wanted to, I've given you pieces of these things in previous meetings, told you they're coming, give you, given you some updates from MASC, from council, on these at the end of last year. Massachusetts has enacted legislation that derives all three of these. And so, I'll point out what the changes are and what the new policy, policies are. I'll give you an overview of them, and I'm rather happy to answer any questions people have, or if people want to take them and come back next month. We've had a, committee members review these over the summer, and they have been vetted by council. And they've been, council has indicated that these are appropriate as presented to you tonight. That doesn't mean you don't have questions, or that you may not have areas of concern that I could talk about tonight or research for you. So, the first one I have is the bullying policy, prevention, bullying prevention policy and intervention policy. As you look at this, this is the third change that the legislature has provided. The new sections are on page two to our current policy, and they are in italics and bold. And they talk about, they're under the section Leadership, which has been, that entire section has been added. What the first bullet describes is that the planning for this is reviewed and developed in consultation with school staff, teachers, professional support staffs, school personnel, volunteers, administrators, community representatives, local law enforcement agencies, students, parents, and guardians. And that will be happening as we review these plans in the future. And obviously, people have an opportunity even now to give us input over this next month. I don't know how well the media has covered these changes, but these changes have been requested of the legislature, but these have been made law. At least every four years, beginning with 15, 16 school year, we'll administer a Department of Education-provided survey around climate, prevalence of bullying, the nature, severity of bullying in our schools. They'll provide that to us, and we will put that in place in our school system. And then, the third bullet is one that I struggle with a little bit, but it's in the law. And that creates vulnerable classes of students or vulnerable groups of students. And I know that that's a, certainly this, I'll read this to you just for a moment, and recognize that certain students may be more vulnerable, become targets of bullying, harassment, or teasing, based on actual or perceived characteristics, including race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, sex, socioeconomic status, homelessness, academic status, gender identity or expression, physical appearance, or sensory disability, or by association with a person who has or is perceived to have one or more of these characteristics. Steps will be taken to create a safe supportive environment for vulnerable populations in the school community, and provide all students with the skills and knowledge and strategies to prevent or respond to bullying, harassment, or teasing. The only problem I have with it is that I hate, I think there are so many different groups of students that could be singled out to identify certain groups. I just, I want to, I want to be in a place where all students, no matter how you would characterize them, are treated well and not bullied. And so, once you start listing out all sorts of different groups, you're, you're going to forget somebody.
Yeah, this is 16, I counted them.
Yeah. So, but this is in the, this is in the law, it's in the statute, and so it's, what I've included for you here. Then, if you continue on, there's a notification to parents. The principal is designated on page six. Under notification of parents, shall inform the parent or guardian of the target about the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's problem resolution system and the process for accessing that system, regardless of the outcome of the bullying determination. And in the last section, page nine, there's a problem resolution system that you, that provides in the document, information to parents wishing to file a complaint with the Department of Education about a problem of bullying through their resolution system. So. Do you have questions about that?
Can I just add, that second bullet on the leadership, these ones every four years?
Yes.
Have you, you know, as far as staffing, how much time you?
I appreciate that question, because it was one of the things I wanted to mention. So, this in Abington is, this has been framed using the student support team. It spends quite a bit of time on this. The student support team are our principal, nurse, guidance counselor, any teacher who might be involved with a student, depending on the student, assistant principal. So it's that team of people at the building level that know and hear and see things at the building level the best, and are best able to triage and provide support for all kids in need, whether it's academic, social, emotional. Certainly bullying falls into that, because bullying impacts all of those things. And so, they meet every week, they keep a log, they keep a case list, they check in with teachers on students. And so, that's how this is individualized, based on student need. So minimally once a week, but that team also could meet on an emergency basis if something comes up, just as fast as people can get to a private place in a room to have those discussions.
Okay. But this, this is an additional requirement on top of all that, because it's within a requirement now to do this survey.
Right. They're going to give us the survey. I'm sorry. I missed the question. I guess I answered, I answered the, I didn't answer the question. I said something that was really good, but it didn't answer your question.
Oh, no, it was very good, yeah, it was very helpful. But, but as far as the survey itself, though, that's additional work.
Right.
That is...
Yep. And the state's going to provide us that survey.
So we don't know how long it'll take.
Right, right. And it says at least every four years, right now, starting next year, next...
We already have a lot of surveys and different things that come from the state, so it's probably just one more that they'll add. It's the positive spin on that.
And at the high school, we have the...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. As Alan pointed out, for example, we have an anti-bullying club at the high school. And, and, you know, we have assemblies, we have informational pieces, we have those, it's part of the health curriculum in terms of students that are at risk. I mean, it's really, we spend a lot of time on it.
We have our buddy bench, right at the Beaverbrook, right?
Yeah. It's worth spending time on.
Yep.
Other questions?
So this is going to be for us to, people can continue to review.
Yep. I'm going to ask if people would consider it at our next meeting, gives people time. Background checks. This is another state-required legislative piece. I try not to read to you, but I'm going to read a couple of things from this in terms of background checks, just give you the highlights. This entire policy on background checks, as it pertains to fingerprinting, is brand-new. The CORY checks are not. They're very similar in terms of the process, well, not in terms of the process, but in terms of the administration of it. It shall be the policy that Avenue Public Schools, that as required by law, a state and national fingerprint criminal background check will be conducted to determine the suitability of full or part-time current and prospective employees who may have direct and unmonitored contact with children. So anyway, anyone who is an employee or an appointed person who has direct, the possibility for direct and unmonitored contact with children will be fingerprinted in Massachusetts. Further on in the paragraph, the school committee superintendent or principal, as appropriate, may obtain a state and national fingerprint criminal background check for any volunteer, subcontractor, or laborer commissioned by the school committee, school, or employed by the city or town to perform work on school grounds, who may have direct and unmonitored contact with children. School volunteers and subcontractors slash laborers who may have direct unmonitored contact with children must continue to submit state CORY checks. So, the distinction there is the word "may" for volunteers, and so, the appointed volunteers in Abington are being fingerprinted. We have some coaches at the high school level, and because of their coaching status, because they have the opportunity for unmonitored contact with kids, we're doing that. That's in process already, because this is a law. We are not behind the rest of the Commonwealth. I sat in a room over the summer with my colleagues, sat in a legal seminar just last week over in Rockland with other districts, and my question was, what are we doing with the law? Because none of us have voted this as policy. We were not alone. The rest of Massachusetts is in the exact same place we are, trying to follow these laws before they've been voted as policy. So, because no matter what your policies are, a law trumps, trumps a policy.
And this would become part of the collective bargaining agreement coming up?
It could potentially. Some associations are asking that this be paid for by districts. And so, because we have not started the negotiation process, that's something that the association will ask us to start in the coming weeks or months, this could be something that would be a proposal that has happened in other districts, that it was a proposal.
Only the cost.
Right, right. So, the cost, as I go on just a little bit, just to address that, Mike, the cost for employees who are licensed by the Department of Education is $55. For all other employees, it's $35. We do not do these fingerprints on-site, they're done off-site by people and agencies that the state has set up. We send them to them, they sign off to send the information to us, and then we get the in, then we get the information from them. They give permission to send it to us.
Peter, what about volunteers? Do they, do they pay to have their fingerprint done?
They have to, yeah. They pay the $35 fee, yep.
They can put up to 10 districts to, you know, like a substitute, anyone that's substitutes can put up to 10 districts, so it's $35.
So only a licensed person by DESI, so if you're, if you're a substitute, you would not have to. If you're someone who works in, you know, custodial or maintenance, you wouldn't have to, because you're not a licensed Department of Education area, like a teacher. So, now, what's going to happen, and they haven't started this yet, this has been, this has gone into place for all new employees in Massachusetts. What's going to happen next is probably, the CORY cycle's on a three-year cycle, so that every three years, you have to have an updated CORY. They will probably push all Massachusetts public school personnel through the same system on the CORY cycle. Otherwise, you're going to have literally, I mean, thousands upon thousands of people all going to get fingerprinted at the same time. They've got to spread it out somehow. So I'm just, I'm just anticipating that's how they're going to do it. That's what I've heard people talking about, but that's the next rollout of this. I should just mention as, as Teresa had just mentioned, relying on previous suitable determinations. So, I'll get a report on people, and then I'll be able to make a determination of their suitability. And if someone has been deemed suitable in another district, they don't have to go out and get fingerprinted again, and the requirements of that are here, you can get a letter from the previous district. That's on the third page, under relying on previous suitability determinations.
Just with regards to that, how did the seven years come about? Is there a, that just seems an awful long duration to me? Is there a, some study that was done that said seven years is a suitable duration, or? It just seems an awful long period of time.
It does, and it seems in conflict with, you're going to have it done every three years.
Right.
That's in statute. So, it's a very good question. And I could find out where they came from, or how they came about that.
I'm just curious, yeah, because it just seems like an awful long period of time.
Other, do people have other questions?
I don't know.
Where do you begin?
Yeah, I know.
I mean, this is, you know, you go through this, and, you know, it's amazing with everything else that has to be done. I understand that this is important, it's very important, but this document, to read through it, I mean, there is so much there. I mean, two places, we're subject to audit, based on this, the cost of it. You know, they refer to things that the SA-FIS, they don't define that anywhere. Who is that?
Right. I went and I looked it up. So I don't remember what it is. It's, I think it's, it's the National Fingerprinting Consortium Agency. They're the people that do the fingerprinting.
Yeah, and it's, you know, the CJIS security policy, you know? We have to be in compliance with that. And there is a, is a lot here. It's amazing when you read through this, to break this down. You know, but, you know, I just, when I read it, it was a little confusing to me, because it was saying, the school committee shall only obtain a fingerprint background check for the current, for current prospective employee whom the school committee has direct powers of, which is just you.
Interestingly enough, the school committee has direct hiring and firing for me, but they have the authority to appoint the assistant superintendents, but not fire them.
Okay.
So the argument could be, and I hope, I hope I never experienced this in my career, the school committee could hire an assistant superintendent, and I could fire him that day, which is crazy. But that's, didn't even mean to get, didn't even mean to split hairs on it, but that's technically, but you're right.
Right. And then, and then the next section is, so then the superintendent, superintendent shall also obtain a state national. So it's, it's, what we're responsible for is you and the assistants.
Hiring, but, yep.
Doing the, doing the fingerprint, but then you're responsible for everybody else.
Everybody else.
Right. And then, so if we're responsible for that, then it's all this other stuff that... Right. And then, so if we're responsible for that, then there's all this other stuff that follows behind it.
Right.
That, you know, if we're responsible for something, we better know it's here also.
Just so that you know, the thing that's different about this is the cost. You have to go outside of the district, you get a fingerprint. Other than that, it's so similar to what we do for the Cory reporting. We maintain files, they're up to date, we are, believe me, we're ready to be audited in this area, we have been audited in this area. If you've ever laid awake at night worrying about the people you hire and protecting kids, you know that that's up to date and that's current, and that's done in a three-year cycle, and it is. Every employee goes through that vetting process. And, you know, we do that through the personnel payroll person in our office. And I look at all of the Corys, and I'll be, I look at all of the fingerprinting reports. If there's nothing there, you know, there's nothing to look at. If there is, it gets even worse, Paul, when you're looking at these reports and you're determining if a parent should be provided access to the life of their child's education or not, because you can't, you have them in a building or not. This is not easy stuff, because, you know, nine years ago, they had a drunk driving offense or larceny with a check. It doesn't mean they can't be a part of the life, you know, their educational life of their child. So, they get, and they get more challenging than that. So these are tough things.
Has anybody adopted this? Has any other districts, have they approved this?
This is the language that other districts are adopting, I know on the South Shore, because we shared this at our superintendent's meetings. As you can see, this is directly from MASC. I would, and this has been checked by MASC's council and our own council and the council of the districts, so I would bet you that ninety-nine percent of the districts in Massachusetts are gonna approve this exact language.
So even with FA-FIS in there and people don't know what it is? I mean, that's what floors me. It's like, you can put that in there, and it doesn't define it anywhere in the document. So you approve something, you don't even know what it is.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
I mean, that's the stuff that floors me. Just let me ask a couple
Yep.
Technical things here, as far as the secure location, talks about being in the office of the superintendent.
Yep.
Do you have the space and?
It's in a locked, yeah, it's in a locked, the Corys are already in a locked cabinet, and it's also done electronically with password controls.
Okay. In the office of the superintendent?
Yes.
Okay. And then as far as?
In the desk right across from me.
Don't tell whether it's locked.
The building is armed with alarm.
Mission impossible.
Deleting electronic copies, how do we know we've actually, do we have a degauss, or how do we get rid of this stuff? How do we know it's gone?
That one I don't have the answer to.
Well, usually there's some type of a sanitization procedure that's been approved and allocated, and usually it's a hundred percent effective. I can't speak for exactly what the sanitization procedure for this is, but typically, when you're trying to sanitize electronic fingerprints and any type of documents.
Right.
It's done pretty well.
But that's an additional, we don't have something like that in place now, though. So that'd be...
No.
No, I just, you read through this and, you know, you had said earlier about, you know, people watching at home, it's like, you know, what you're up against, it's just let people read this. And this really is amazing when you go through this. I mean, this is so much detail in here that you have to consider. And then the fact that you're subject to audit, there's a two places.
And it's a double-edged sword, because you're absolutely right on how convoluted and difficult this is. And then at the same time, if you don't go with what has been provided by council and the strength of MASC and MASSS and these other groups, you go at great peril because you're out there by yourself if something happens.
And what if this, we adopt this, do we have any issues with the September twenty, September twenty, what's that? September twenty-seventh and October eighteenth, everybody vote, vote. If that goes through and it approved, so the construction's going on, it is right behind the high school. Do we have an issue with that?
All these people would have to go through a vetting process. We've done, Felicia's done that with the window.
Project, yep.
The roofs and things like that.
But does this elevate what we have to do, though, you know, is there, because, I mean, now there's cost to this?
Right, but they wouldn't have direct unmonitored contact with students. They'd be in a construction zone behind the school.
And that's why there's a word "may" in there.
Right, but everyone, everyone working on the site would have a, would be Coryed.
Okay.
And not only are they Coryed and we check those Corys, then the employment rosters are checked periodically to make sure that the people, in terms of the payroll, that are on the payroll list are the people that were Coryed, so the contractor doesn't sneak somebody in.
So we have to get certified payrolls, so...
And that's cross-checked.
And I mean, even going back to like the Frolio dances, you had parents that wanted to volunteer. We had to go through all those, you know.
So with the dances, what we are doing is, if you're at a Frolio dance with two-hundred people in the gymnasium, we're asking parents to stay in the gymnasium and provide that supervision with everybody else. You're not gonna monitor bathrooms, you're not gonna, you're not, we're not gonna put parents in a situation where they're alone. So, however, if a group takes a field trip down the Freedom Trail, you know, they're gonna be Coryed, but they're probably not gonna be fingerprinted, because you're gonna stop taking trips to the Freedom Trail, because parents aren't gonna pay thirty-five dollars to be fingerprinted before they go on a field trip to the Freedom Trail, but they will be Coryed. Other questions? These are really good questions. Wish that you were asking them of our legislators. And in reality, you know, who would say that fingerprinting people that may have, I should say this to the public, the reason this is in place is because the Cory process that we use provides a background check for people in the state of Massachusetts. This provides a national background check. And who would argue that that's not a good thing when you're trying to protect the kids?
And most other states already have us in place.
Yeah.
Massachusetts is late in this.
So, before we finish on that one, so, we're gonna find out about where that seven years and maybe what that SA-FIS.
Yep, and try to find a glossary for people.
Yep.
Terms. Because when I read it, I looked these things up, but that was when I first read it, you know, beginning of the summer. So I couldn't tell you exactly what it is doing. Chapter two-two-two, the third of the policies that Massachusetts is providing us. So, this document is legislation passed called Chapter two-two-two. This is an effort by the state to close the gap on high-risk populations of students. In Massachusetts, there are kids who have been suspended from school and are so disconnected from the learning that they're missing out on opportunities in school because, they're not there, because of disciplinary reasons. So, we try to do a good job of talking about what we do in Abington and how we intend to handle this. This is, this is about educational services for kids that are out more than ten days and access to the curriculum for kids that are suspended for less than ten days. So currently, when someone's been suspended in Abington from school, whether it's in school or out of school, they, we continue to allow access to the curriculum. Students can make up their tests and quizzes, they're given their assignments, so that we can assist them, and they don't come back to school and feel behind as best as we can. You cannot recreate the experience of being in a classroom, though. I guess not all of Massachusetts has been doing this, and a lot of towns in Massachusetts have been doing a lot of suspending of kids because the legislature felt the need to lower the number of suspensions and provide academic support and access to the curriculum for Massachusetts. And so that's what this is about. So, in the middle of this page, in the first page, I just highlight for you, "In determining the severity of the penalty or suspension, the appropriate administrator may consider all relevant facts, including but not limited to previous disciplinary record, the severity of the disruption of the educational process, the degree of danger to self or others, the degree to which the student is willing to change his or her inappropriate behavior, whether alternative consequences are appropriate to re-engage the student in learning. Alternative consequences may include the use of evidence-based strategies and programs such as mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, and positive behavioral interventions and supports." The first thing they talk about is the eligibility to participate in school activities and events. Again, this is language that's taken, that's derived from this legislation to try to provide Massachusetts schools a limited scope for out-of-school suspensions. They're trying to keep kids in school, so they're trying to, with this, trying to get us to use other alternatives, those things like activities that kids are involved in. This does not mean the kids are not gonna be involved in activities if we put this policy in place or when whatever policy you put in place is in place. These are things that would be used, you know, judiciously in the best interests of the child and all children. What it's going to do is probably fold more of our students who would have been out-of-school suspended into in-school suspensions on the second page. So, an in-school suspension provides students more support because, and a lot of times it's more punitive, because students are required to be in school and follow school rules in an isolated sort of capacity where they can do their work and they can get their assignment. So academically, it's a good thing. And if a parent doesn't support an out-of-school suspension, and the child's playing Xbox all day, a day of suspension really doesn't mean anything out of school. So, interesting things in this section are, again, we're gonna be driven more towards in-school suspensions. Above that, it talks about Massachusetts general law thirty-seven H, thirty-seven H and a half, thirty-seven H and three-quarters, and CMR, and six-oh-three CMR fifty-three. Those are references to felonies, violent behaviors, weapons, drugs, offenses that are more of a long-term suspension in nature. In other words, if a child, if a student commits a felony outside of school, there's a provision that schools are able to keep them out of school until that's resolved if needed, there's a process for that. If they commit a violent act in school, a knife, a weapon, those types of felonious acts in school, there are other provisions. That separates those students out of this in-school suspension area. The out of, and again, that provides students in in-school suspension access to the curriculum. There is no right to appeal to the superintendent after a principal's decision on in-school suspension for what's considered short-term, and that's the ten-day period either consecutively or cumulatively during a school year. Out-of-school suspension procedures are then described, and the due process rights for out-of-school suspension, the notice. It continues on to talk about the offense, about the basic charge, about the potential consequences, the opportunity for hearing, time, date, and location. Again, those are about due process rights. There's a provision for the emergency removal of students, should a child pose a threat to the building or the good order of the schoolhouse for temporary emergency removals of a student so that more thoughtful determinations, investigations can take place in the student's absence so that a more long-term or a better solution can be provided.
There would be steps taken to make sure that there was a positive transition from the school to wherever they have to go, right?
Absolutely, yeah. Because, you know, we get these, these students don't just, that's a great question, because the students, they're ours, you know. They come, we own them. And so, the suspension of a student isn't done, you know, with any sort of malice. It's really done because there's a difficult situation, a fight, they need to be removed from the building because it could be potentially violent to have them back the next day. And so, good school discipline isn't just putting them out of school and closing the door. It's providing mediation around those violent acts, giving them the conflict resolution skills so that there aren't further fights. I mean, we own them. They're our kids. And so, it's not just putting them out, it's creating those bridges or ramps to get them back and functioning at a high level so they can be successful. And that's why some of these things aren't so much of a change for Abington, because we do those things in Abington. And I would think that across the Commonwealth, perhaps, they weren't being done in all places, and it was becoming a problem. But as long as we're a member of the Commonwealth, we got a sailing ship. So, in terms of short-term suspensions, which is a suspension out of school of less than ten days, either consecutive or cumulative, there is no right to appeal to the superintendent, at the principal's level, that's the final decision. Then we get into procedures for a long-term. I can't anticipate that we aren't gonna have what would be described as a long-term suspension. That's ten or more days. I can't tell you that that's not gonna happen in Abington. However, from my experience, those are the types of infractions that lead right into the thirty-seven H, H and a half, and H and three-quarters. Those are, the vast majority of those occur, are going to be those things of a felonious nature that are gonna fall into that longer term, again, Section thirty-seven H of Chapter seventy-one. And so, those, what that basically means is if a child is out for ten or more days, consecutive or cumulative, that there's no longer access to the curriculum that's provided, but educational services are provided. So what that means is the child would receive tutoring or some sort of placement on the eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth day. There's a determination of what types of things are causing the behavior to have them exceed that ten-day mark. But again, you know, when you look at those types of offenses, you're looking at more of those thirty-seven H, H and a half, and H and three-quarters types of offenses, which are, you know, and the last piece is the expulsion, exclusion piece in this. And that really hasn't changed for Massachusetts. That's the same as it always has been. And the last piece describes those educational services that I was trying to describe to you in the beginning and then throughout the overview. So, that's a lot. Do you have questions on that for tonight?
Just, again, there's a lot here. But as far as if it's kindergarten through grade three.
Right, there's a separate thing.
Yeah.
There's a separate designation for that, and, Paul, I'm trying to find what page that's on, sorry.
The third one in at the bottom for the short-term, letter D. Third page. Or he has it in a different place?
So...
Actually, I think it's in each section it talks about it.
Okay.
Each section.
There's a, there's a higher, there's a higher standard for K through three in terms of actions that are taken for out-of-school suspensions. There, it's a very, very rare, 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 I don't know that I ever remember a K through three student. Very infrequently. Very infrequently.
Very infrequently.
So there's a higher standard for those things to happen in determinations for a K through three student in terms of notice and appeal hearings and rights.
And to that, sometimes, like when you're dealing with K through three, do you find that sometimes it's more of an accident that something happens? Because they talk about, you know, weapons being a gun or a knife or facsimile.
Some of it's developmental, of course, at that age, but then there are children that are diagnosed with behavioral and emotional disorders, and so there are separate programming for them, and there are times where there is violence, and so it is handled differently.
Right, but I'm just saying, the way this is written, though, you have that case, and then you have, because I read recently, it was a, the parents had put a backpack together, it wasn't his normal one, and included stuff, and in it was a fake knife. And it was this big thing. Then the child took it out and brought it up, showed it to the teacher. Well, that child got suspended. I think there was like second or third grade, something like that, because that's the way the law is written.
We've also had students that have seen things on TV, and parents have things around the house, and they think it would be cool to show their friends. So they put it, you know, they bring it to school to show their friends. You know, they see it, they're inundated with...
Right, but I'm just saying, in this case, though, the way, and it wasn't in Massachusetts, it was, the law's the law.
But those are zero, that's the zero tolerance issue, I think. But those are zero, that's the zero tolerance issue, I think.
Right. But do we have that here? The way I read this is...
No. Not in Massachusetts. We don't have that zero tolerance piece.
Okay.
Big pieces of this, that everything is investigated.
It's a judgment, it's individual as well. Because that's a perfect example of, like, policy.
Because even the parents were like, it wasn't his fault.
But at the same time, there's that, there are certain places that have zero tolerance in anything, you know, their consequence.
But, you know, there are, there are students that have inadvertently, you know, gone, gone fishing, you know, and they had a knife, and they brought the knife to school, and they, you know, they showed a friend, or they left it on the bus. And, you know, they've been suspended because, you know, leaving a knife on a bus is, even though you didn't mean to do it, even though you were fishing on Saturday, you know, I don't want to be in a system that knives are left on buses.
As opposed to someone having the knife in their backpack, coming into school and saying to the teacher, "I went camping this weekend, I forgot it, and here it is." That's different than showing it to their friends on the bus.
Can I just, on expulsion, exclusions and expulsion, that B, and it goes to any student who assaults the principal's assistant for the P to P today, and they mentioned including athletic games.
Yep.
Well, how come we don't have, how come it doesn't include coaches? What if there was violence against a coach during a game? Is that something that...
That would be, you know, we would certainly cover that, absolutely.
Educational staff.
Educational staff.
I wouldn't consider a coach educational staff. Some, we have, we have coaches here that don't teach.
It's like we said earlier, when you start listing things...
Right.
You get in trouble. But educational staff would, I mean, coaches would be covered, in my mind.
Coaches are educating students in how to play their game. They are responsible for those students.
Yeah. I've never heard of considered educational staff, because if they don't teach in the district, they're not the educational staff. I understand the question.
I would, I believe, I believe they're included. I would be including them.
And then his, as far as the long-term, if we have 10-day, and it talks about, any student who is suspended or expelled pursuant to this section shall have the opportunity to earn credits, have support, make up assignments, test papers, and others. Is there a cost to the district for that?
Yes.
And is, is, does the district have to take it, or can the district put it back on the parents' guardians?
We pay it.
Is there any leeway as far as saying, I mean, is there any leeway as far as us charging that back?
No.
Is that in the law, or is that just your assessment?
That's what's required in Massachusetts.
Right. But I don't see where it's, it says you have to provide it, but it doesn't say that you can't charge for it. Because here's someone that does something that they shouldn't have done, and now we have to pay for it? Because what I'm saying is you have a budget, and you're taking out of this budget something you didn't budget for.
I don't disagree with you. But I'm telling you the way Massachusetts sees it.
Provide is defined as...
And I don't disagree with you at all, but that's the way Massachusetts provides it.
Providing was paid.
But has the law been interpreted that way? Has anybody challenged it to say that you can't do that? You cannot charge back?
Oh, this has been challenged in terms of another unfunded mandate. But in terms of, just in my background with general ed and special ed, we own that child from three to 22, depending upon general ed or special ed. And so if a child falls under this area of expulsion or suspension or what have you, their rights would be that they have access, and providing means that we're providing the access and we're providing the service.
And I'm not an attorney.
And it even goes into transportation. Say that we have a child that we have to have tutorials in a separate facility. Who's paying for the transportation of that child if the parents work and can't get the child to school? So there's a lot of variables that come into it.
The case, the case law in Massachusetts goes back to the U.S. Constitution, like liberty, pursuit of happiness. They, they put education under life, under a constitutional right. And so what the case law show, what the case law, and I'm not an attorney, but what the case law provides is that if you deny that, you're denying a constitutional right to a citizen of the United States. I mean, I couldn't make that up, even if I wanted to.
Right, right. Well, I even think the way that starts out, the second paragraph, that code of conduct and both supervisory within the framework of the United States Constitution. I mean, really? Come on. Why don't we go back to the Magna Carta, too, based on that? It's like, you know, that's, you know, someone was full of themselves when they're writing this thing.
And I am not disagreeing with you. I'm telling you the box I have to live in, is what I'm telling you.
I know, and that's what is amazing, when you sit and go through all this stuff. This is what you live with every day. And it's, so I can go in and do stuff, and you expel me, but you still have to take care of me, even though...
But think of it now, the bigger picture, is the law was written because of those recurring offenders who continue to be expelled. They're not receiving any type of education. They continue to offend, they land themselves in jail, and taxpayers are paying for that. So now they're backtracking it and saying, when you suspend or when you expel, you need to continue to educate them so that they are able to make better choices instead of landing themselves. So you can see where the legislatures are doing it, again, you know, in the best interest of. Laws are usually written for a reason. But you're right, Paul, I mean, we could go back to every law. You know, why does that fall under taxpayers paying for it? Or why does that fall under the school system's budget or what have you? But in this particular case, if you look at the big picture, you know, they're saying, okay, all these kids are getting thrown out. They're not being educated, they're not learning how to make better choices, and so we have them here.
So I started by saying, this is about those high-risk students. The state is trying to provide educational services for that gap of those, what you call high-risk students, which is exactly what we've been talking about. They are legislating social reform.
But it is enjoyable to watch you question this, because we're in it and we have the same exact question.
No, and I understand, but it's tough when you look at a budget, though, and there's so many things that go into your budget that I don't think people...
I understand.
Right. Or that people really understand. They just think it's like, oh, well, it's teachers, it's books, it's this, that. There's so many other, you need a teacher for this, you need a book for that, you need a computer for that, you need access for these things, and it all builds up. And it's like, that's why the budget is what it is, and we, you know, we're just...
And fluid.
Yeah.
I had a, I had a parent call me that was asking, you know, why we had, we had 32 fifth graders in a classroom. And I, it's wrong that we do. Our priorities are a grade four, five, and six teacher for Abington. At least, that's my recommendation to you.
Well, whoever that parent is, they meant to that, because I have a fifth grader.
Yeah, I told him I was...
And he has 32 kids in his class, so. But thankfully, we have a great staff, you know, and they can handle it.
They can handle it, but those children are not getting the same level of education as in the other towns where there were 25 kids in a class, or 24 kids in a class. And that's, you know, part of our problem here, too, is our teachers are doing an outstanding job under very difficult circumstances, but our kids still have to compete with everyone from all of the other surrounding towns.
So on those, and thank you, and for those questions, because they were really good questions, and they helped me make a better presentation. But if you have questions between now and the next meeting, you know, if you want to email them to me, and I could do them publicly. But some of these questions, as we saw tonight, are really thoughtful, tricky things. And so, again, this has been reviewed by MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASSS, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and it was written by attorneys, which are derivatives from the actual legislation. Massachusetts pumped these three things out, it gave you tonight, and this is consistent with what other districts are implementing. And so we really need to deliberate or consider these at our next meeting if we could. And so any questions you have, I appreciate them in advance if you could, just it would help me prepare for those questions so that hopefully we can vote on them.
Now, when we take these three, would they, are these three that will go into student handbook?
So I appreciate that you said that. So yes, they will. They, we would be providing addendums to people in the, you know, as soon as these are if and when, and when these are approved. And we are going through the process now of pulling out those policies that are consistent across all handbooks, across the district, as was suggested, and then providing more uniformity. And so we're going to pull those things out now, and then as these handbooks are developed throughout the year, schools and school councils will be able to hang those other things on that uniform code or policy that are particular to their school buildings or their age groups.
So will, will any of these, so supersede what we currently have in a handbook?
Yes.
So would that, does that have to come back to us to pull that out? Because only, we approve the student handbooks on an annual basis.
You approve each policy as it goes into the handbook, but not the entire handbook? Because you've approved each piece, so you'd be approving these pieces to be added to the handbooks with the, with the things that have already been approved recently and through the years.
But technically speaking, though, if you bring the student handbook before us with changes, doesn't that open up the entire student handbook for comment?
I mean, I'm always interested in your comments, but I'm asking for you to approve those individual things.
But don't, usually handbooks are reviewed once a year.
Right.
Approve them at the end.
Right, right. But that's what I'm saying. Do you, because when I was looking at this, I was sort of thinking, it's like, well, how does this fit in with the student handbook? But we look at those at the end, and say, well, I want to change a little bit here. Does that open, sort of like when you present the bullying policy, this, if you have new things, you're not just talking about the new things. If something else is in there, we're going to question that, too, because the policy is now open for review.
The individual policies are reviewed.
Right.
Not the entire...
Right. But that's what I'm saying, is that the student handbook, when you say the student handbook is coming before us, I think technically the entire handbook is now open for review and comment.
However, the student handbook has to be consistent with the policies that we've approved.
Right, right. And that's why we have the one standard student handbook that covers everything, and then you have separate ones for each school. But these, like the bullying policy, that is, it's not just the new things that are in there. The entire policy now is open for comment.
The entire bullying policy?
Right.
But that doesn't change the wellness policy?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to say.
Right. But I'm saying, when the student handbook comes up, I think technically the student handbook is now open.
Not those...
In the, in the spring?
In the spring.
Yeah, yeah, it's open, but the principal's bringing you the proposed changes, with the assumption that the other parts of it have already been approved.
Right. But I guess I'm just trying to, if, in reading the student handbook, not the section that they want to change, you had, you wanted to propose a change, that's when you would do it, if you're a school committee.
It would go through the school council.
Yeah, I would say that if you see something in another section of the handbook that's another policy that's other than bullying, that we need to have that discussion with the school council at that building now so that they can consider those changes and bring a recommendation to the school.
Well, I don't have anything. I'm just trying to...
Well, no, but if you did, at great peril, it would be June, and you would say, well, you know, I want to talk about the wellness policy, this policy at the Beaverbrook Elementary School, and the school council had already had 10 meetings. I wouldn't want to put anyone in a position, you or the school council or the school committee, where you're going back to something that has been previously approved and they never touched or considered. See what I'm saying?
If I'm hearing you correctly, what you're saying, it's really language, so that if they're bringing the whole handbook, then the whole handbook is open. If they're bringing the policy, then it's just the policy.
It's just the policy, right.
So it's just how we word it on this document, is that we're bringing...
These three policies.
The discipline policy. So it doesn't say, "Abington High School Handbook," it says, "The Discipline Policy."
But in May or June, you'd have the handbook approved.
Right. But again, I, if there's a problem or a question on a handbook, we'd want those school councils knowing that there's a question about it now, not in June.
Because they spend the entire...
They spend the entire, you know that. I know you've done work at the school level. You'd hate to see that happen.
Yeah, I don't have anything right now. I'm just...
Can you say that really loud?
Other questions? Email, email me other things, I'd appreciate it, so I can present it at the next meeting and hopefully consider it. The next item I have is communication from the Department of Education at the, they provided this back in July, but I thought the committee would be interested. It's a breakdown of how Massachusetts chose PARK or MCAS, which is something we talked about at the end of last year. It breaks down about 60-40 in the state with about 60% of the state choosing the PARK assessment for this coming year, and about 40% of the state electing to take MCAS, as Abington did, for the 14, 15 school year.
Would those 60% be based, based probably on one-to-one computing or something similar?
You know, that was all over the place. It wasn't just the districts with the technology that did the PARK assessment. It was really all over the place. I mean, I don't have a scientific, you know, I haven't disaggregated any of that, but that's just me looking at it.
It is amazing, though, that MASC was served, I mean, back in May, June, July, I mean, this was, everything was, every day was coming. Now you don't hear anything about it. There's not...
Dates to remember.
So we don't have any, there's no motions needed?
It was just an update for people. So, you know, after you make, we deliberated about that quite a bit. I know the committee looked at a lot of information. After looking at all that information, I thought you'd want to see how the dust settled in Massachusetts for this coming school year. That was all.
And there's quite a few documents on the common court, PARK link on the website. You've added quite a few, I noticed, yeah.
Dates to remember?
So under dates to remember, Friday, August 29th, there is no school. Monday, September 1st is Labor Day, there's no school. Office, school offices are closed. Tuesday, September 2nd, kindergarten begins. Thursday, September 4th, I should have mentioned this earlier, the Abington School Building Committee has a forum at Frohle Middle School at 7:00 P.M. And I apologize, Ken, this was jogging something that was very important for me to mention to you. I want to make sure I say this to you as the committee and to the community. There's an Abington School Building Committee, and that is a, there's a group of volunteers who are working very hard over the last two years to provide a good recommendation to this committee and to the Board of Selectmen about the most efficient and educationally appropriate way to educate our children in Abington, and to maximize the benefit for resources for learning. That's different than the ABC. The ABC is a group of citizens of a yes, who are a yes committee for this ballot election that you write at the town meeting, we need two-thirds vote to get to the ballot election. And the ABC, a Better Community Group, is starting to get information out there to the community. These are different groups. I want you to know that the ABC is not affiliated with the Abbott and Public Schools in any way. They're independent, they're a separate community organization. I certainly appreciate the work that they're doing, and I think they're doing good work because, to my knowledge, to date, every single thing that they are publishing, they, as far as I know, and again, to date, they go through the Office of Campaign Finance to get it checked by council there. And I'm asking them to print, everything that they print, to make sure that it indicates clearly on what they print, that it was printed by their group, because it's important people, that people know that tax dollars, tax resources are not being spent with the ABC group. They're their own independent group. They've raised money on their own, and they're doing that independently of the schools. They're not using our copy machines, or our time, or our dollars, or our email, or our resources for their work. And so I just wanted you to know that was being vetted by the Office of Campaign Finance Reform as that moves forward. I forgot to mention it earlier. So Sunday, September 14th, is the Jeffrey Coombs Memorial Road Race at the Woodsdale. Registration begins at 7:30 a.m., and the race begins at 9:00 a.m. On Monday, September 15th, is the Abington Education Foundation Golf Tournament at Riverbend Country Club. Registration begins at 7:00 a.m. It's a shotgun format, starts at 8:00 a.m. Saturday... Saturday, September 27th is the Special Town Meeting. Check-in begins at 9:00 AM. It's expected that there will be large crowds there. They're anticipating up to 1,500 people, or planning for that. Multiple rooms will be used at Abington High School, and I don't, I'm anticipating that we may want to have a, perhaps a school committee meeting just prior to that, I'm not, I'm not sure, I can, I can check later with you guys on that, that's up to you, so that we can be in session during that meeting. Saturday, October 18th, there'll be that ballot box election for Abington, polls open from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
I just had one thing, Wednesday, September 3rd at 7 at the police station is the Abington Boosters meeting.
Okay, who's the first Wednesday in the month, pretty much?
They've been switching their format around, it used to be the first Tuesday, and the last year they went to Wednesday, and Thursday towards the end of the year, and.
I'll get the JSON, see if he has them, okay.
And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. Requesting approval for 20 homeschool students for the 2014-15 school year. All paperwork has been completed, we have four students in grade one, one student in grade two, zero in grade three, three in grade four, one student in grade five, one in grade six, one in grade seven, three in grade eight, one in grade nine, one in grade 10, three in grade 11, and one in grade 12.
How does this compare to the number of students we had last year?
Although we have had about 15 kids enter grade three this year, so there's no homeschool, which was zero. So, it's been interesting that the growth, the solar check has been broken.
Every year, it's funny, you never know what grade it's going to be, but you, for some reason, you, you receive six, seven, eight, nine, 10 students in one grade, and you only give one or two. So, we're watching those numbers now. As kids register, some schools are open, some schools open next week, and so families will be registering for the next week or so.
Right.
For school. So, we see a lot of transition in and out over the next week.
So, I have a motion for approval.
Can I just ask one question? You have one now, this is grade 9 slash 10?
Right, two credits.
Okay.
So, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the recommended home education programs for the school year 2014-15 as recommended by Dr. Thomas?
So moved.
Second?
Home favor.
Hi.
Thank you. Next is we have our grants, we've continued to work through the grants. As of today, we are negative $6,821 from last year's state funding, however, we continue to work on that. Teresa Minahan is, is an integral part of that as well. So, we'll continue to keep you updated on our state funding.
Can I just ask one on the 94-142? What is that?
Special education.
Okay, all right.
It's a large number because it covers a lot of salaries as well.
And is that funding going to continue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in the 60s, the federal government promised about 100% funding, that's, that's about the 10 or 20% that we got out of that from the 60s.
Seventies, yeah.
Seventies?
Yeah.
At DEA.
What do you mean, sped law?
No, back the federal government implemented special education changes. Yes, we anticipate that funding.
Yeah, we need that funding, every district needs that funding. So, it comes from the federal government to all the states.
I think the question may be also around how are you going to cover $6,000 decrease? And I think that may be the next question, and the answer to that is, really, the adjustments are made around professional development and using other grant. Increasing what we use for professional development is something that doesn't impact salaries. It impacts, not for people in the area of professional development, but that's how we, that's how we kind of absorb $6,000 decrease in the grant.
All right, next is our extended school year program, our summer program that we have for our special education students. Thank you, Sarah Bullman and the team of staff members. We are seeing the numbers are continuing to grow. This year, you see that there was a referral of 111 and 81 students did attend, and then you see the various breakdowns of all the students that accessed the different types of programming. Something I do want to highlight is I'd like to thank the Eager Beaver Camp, because we have students that need wraparound services and a longer day for summer programming. And so, this year, we were able to collaborate with Kate Casey, Peter Serino, Sarah Bullman, Sandy Beaton Small. It was really a team effort to work with everybody in terms of accessing the town camp, so that the students can go there with, with paraprofessionals, with supports, and be able to access that. And it was really well received, parents loved it, kids loved it, and the staff was very supportive. So, thanks to everybody for that program. Next, the summer curriculum, we did a lot with summer curriculum, as we do every summer. This year, particular focus was in the area of Spanish, math, and science. And then congratulations to our staff who worked tirelessly on district determined measures last year. All were approved this past July 10th. The DESC notified us that all Abington Public Schools district determined measures were approved, which is great news, because we're going to be using those district determined measures this year. Will be the first year of the student impact rating data for collection. All that data collection will be used based on the district determined measures, so we congratulated our staff yesterday morning, it was very exciting to get that news. So, congratulations to everyone. In addition, for special education, we met our target for the performance summary rating under Indicator 11, and that's the percent of children who were evaluated within 60 days of receiving parental consent for initial evaluation, or if the state establishes a timeframe within which the evaluation must be conducted within the timeframe. And so, you see that the federal guideline is 60 days, but Massachusetts has a timeframe of 45 days. So, we did meet on that target. So, congratulations to our sped staff on that.
And was the five that didn't, that one didn't impact us?
No. Nope.
How does that work? They select the 17 and the 12?
Yeah, how it works is basically you have to analyze, sometimes parents just can't meet during a certain timeframe, and we have documentation to verify why they couldn't meet, and then that's kept on, in, on their, or in their records, so that when the audit is conducted, they have to make sure that, the team chairs are actually submitting all that paperwork as to why it wasn't held within the 45-day timeframe.
Okay. But they were all held, it just didn't happen within that 45 days?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, but the 45 days is the key piece for the Indicator 11, because the state has to report to the federal government regarding those timeframes, so. But we met our target, which is great, and again, we met it because we had the ongoing documentation of. So, everybody has an IP every year, however, if it doesn't come within that certain timeframe, you know, then there's explanation for that. All right? And it's, it's one of those things, the scheduling, and, or something happens and parents are sick, or what have you, and so it's just reworking schedules. It's a compliance thing and adherence, just to make sure that it happens. And then, the last piece is really informational in terms of just where we are, I've been mapping this out for you, because we've had critical tasks that have been a lot of work over the past few years, and so we're now basically getting to, entering 2014-15, where we will see full implementation of the Common Core state standards and all the resources and textbooks that we have been able to purchase thus far, and will continue to in the future to make sure that we are in adherence of the Common Core state standards. As you know, we voted that MCAS will remain as the assessment test for this school year. Our evaluation system, we will begin year two of our Joint Labor Management Team, we've had a very successful Joint Labor Management Team, I can't say enough about that team, because last year was a trying year with the amount of work that we had to get through in terms of a new evaluation, but also the whole baseline edge tool. So, we're really thankful for all of those members, and they've also signed on to also be for year two, which is really great for us, that continuity. And also, we'll be looking at the district determined measures, there will be teacher and student surveys this year that will also be conducted via the state. The retail is, is underway, and we have members that will be enrolled, or have been enrolled, and will begin in October that training. You're aware of the feasibility project, so that vote will be taking place shortly. And then, we just talked about full implementation of the Chapter 222. And then, this year, we've had an intensive amount of audits over the last few years, and again, this year we will have a, have a visit from the DESC, but it'll be the mid-cycle review, which is less intensive, so it'll be a one-day visit, and they will be looking at critical areas from the visit three years ago. But it's the in-between, because the CPR full cycle is every six years, and so they come back in between on the third year, just to make sure that you are adhering to any concerns that they had. So, any questions, that's more informational? I'm always available, call, email, if anyone has anything that they'd like to talk about. Thank you.
So, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Thank you, I'm just going to give you a status report of some of our summer projects, and although Peter did.
I stole your thunder.
Something, you do it every year, and I'm not sure why I don't remember that as I write my notes out, but bears repeating, the thank you bear repeating for the work that was done over the summer. The, the buildings don't get ready by accident, the students don't get to school by bus by accident, goods and materials aren't, don't arrive in the schools by accident. So, I do have a number of people that I would like to thank. Carol Carney and Ampa Carraro for getting the bus routes and the bus tags, and all the students to and from school safely. The central office staff, Paulette Lynette, Teresa and Cheryl for answering so many questions and helping solve problems. Principals and their office staff, Jason, Jason Lynn and Lance Hammond in the Maintenance Department and their summer crew, and all the head custodians, Paul, Steve, Mike, Ed, and John, along with their summer crews. And highway and park and rec staff, who also helped us over the last few weeks get in the buildings up and ready. They worked very hard all summer, and we're very lucky to have the crews that we have and the people working over the summer. So, thank you to all of them. I'm just going to give you a very brief overview of some of the projects that we did, that we did do over the summer. We had a new rug and stall in the Woodsdale office, which was very much needed and, and looks great. Using the Fall Town Meeting technology money, we had computer, new computers deployed across the district, and they look great, they work great, and people are very happy. And happy technology makes happy people. All of the rooms were clean, floors were waxed, heating and ventilation systems were clean and adjusted, there was safety and environmental testing done in all of the school, throughout the schools over the summer. We had insulation, installation of additional interactive whiteboards across the district, and the general and preventative maintenance that, that we do during the summer, that ensures that our buildings are working when school opens. It was a busy summer, and very pleased.
It's still too much, you had a lot more than I had.
All right, you took, you took a little of my thunder, but. And then, you know, the weather over, the weather over the summer was much cooler than it, than it will be this week, which, which also really helps everyone, because obviously our buildings aren't air-conditioned and, so.
One, one of the things that's going to be difficult when we go to that meeting and try to get a 2/3 vote, is it's going to take place in a high school that looks clean and presentable. But people, if they sit in the cafeteria for this meeting, will be sitting in an area that the first floor was flooded and the water was rushing in down through there, because a heating pipe went, we lost school because of that. And any pipe in that building, in those heating systems, could go. A visual inspection does not indicate how fragile those pipes are because they're so old. And if we had lost a pipe in the third floor, and it had, and, and it did happen in the middle of the night, so we didn't know about it, we would have lost significant parts of that building for much longer than we did. So, that's one room they'll be sitting in to take this vote, that looks pretty good, but is, has an asbestos ceiling above it that's encapsulated, and just above that is the Paul K. Smith Room, which is another room people will sit in that looks pretty good. But you'll, they'll see a giant section, almost the size of this ceiling, that was replaced because that roof leaks, and again, there's asbestos in that ceiling that became a hazardous area that was cleaned up by a professional company and tested, so the kids are safe, different types of tests were done, so the kids are safe, but that, the patch looks pretty good. But that's an old roof, and it's going to go again. And so, it's because of the good work people do to make our buildings look the way that they do, we're almost our own worst enemies, because we've been responsible in taking care of the buildings. Other communities that have gotten buildings faster, because they don't look as safe or clean as ours, but people take great pride in the work that they do, so.
All set?
I just have two questions. One is, as far as FY14, do we do a year-end, end-of-year budget to actual how the results were, like line by line, say, we had X amount and, you know, flooring supplies we spent, you know, why?
Not by line, I do it by category. So, instruction, operation and maintenance, special education.
Would that be something that you, we could, you could provide for the next meeting? I'm not, not as a discussion, I, just something that we could.
Sure.
And then, secondly, were you able to hire someone new that we were looking for, who was retiring, wasn't there, in the?
Sarah Gany. Oh, and, yes.
Yeah, for the county bookkeeper?
Yep. Sarah Gany, I think she may have been announced in the earlier meeting, but she actually started yesterday. She'll be, Paulette Batson will be retiring in September 20th, and so we have about a three-week overlap training.
So, did she start this week?
Started yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, all right. So, she's all up to speed?
Yeah, she's all ready.
She showed up on time and she stayed late. And she came back.
So, we have new business and establishing of the next school committee meeting, which will be Tuesday, September 23rd, here at 7:00 PM.
We do have the Protocol Subcommittee meeting on September 3rd at 3:30 at the North School. Anybody who would like to attend a scintillating discussion on policy for school committees, it's always open.
Provide coffee or tap water.
You used to make cookies.
Yeah, I didn't make, I bought the cookies.
I bought the cookies.
Or Theresa probably helped me provide snacks. So, do you want to do informational just quickly?
Yeah.
So, under informational, I just want to highlight, provided, the Woodsdale and the Frollo are going to be taking the NEAP, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. I already, in a previous under informational, gave you the, the information that they've provided us for the Woodsdale, this information's for the Frollo, and the other, just calendars and information that you can see in the attached, would be enclosed.
All set? So, I would like to make adjournance meeting, if you want to make a recommendation?
Okay.
Okay. All set? 9:09.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.